Call the order. Call the meeting to order for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Good evening, everybody. The first item up would be the consideration of approval. Of the special meeting minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty two, which we all had received.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Rich, approved seconded by Fred. All favor super brother saying hi. Alright, next up is the election of officers. For the year.
I nominate D J Brown to be chairman.
D J Brown nominated by Rich Strayton, seconded by Fred. All favor sing by saying hi.
I nominate Fred Ingram as the vice chairman.
I second that motion.
Seconded by ritual favor sign by saying hi.
Oh, nice.
Doug's not here, but I nominate Doug to be the continuous the secretary.
All in favor of Doug being secretary, signify by saying hi. Alright, alright. So now I'll give you a rundown, D J Brown as the chairman. Fred Ingram as the vice chairman. And Doug Cuny as the secretary. Next item up would be the chief's reports. So first we'll hear from Chief McColl.
Well, we're in pretty good shape budget wise, you know, we're more than halfway through the the current budget cycle. But it's healthy. There's still stuff to be bought, you know. We're getting multiple prices on everything. I'm sure Chief Baker is doing the same thing because with what's going on, obviously, and still going on. You have to. You really have. Of note, we officially switched to she were these communications today. We no longer deal with utility communications.
I have a quick question on that. When you're talking, did we ever get the mobile chargers that we were waiting for?
We got everything from utility, everything's been installed.
Part of that. Project has come in. We have all the chargers.
And everything's operating.
Everything's, everything's installed, everything's operating. We still have some residual stuff that wasn't thought about that, you know, I'll probably see if I can get out of the budget if I can pay some money and do it. Like a charger here, here or there, desktop charger.
Departments are gonna be switching to Northeast or just you?
I, we are switching to Northeast. I don't know what's going to build.
We may be. Going back and forth and doing some price work between the two, like for instance, I have a quote for. Some additional pager that Norcom had better price than utility now. So, yeah, we are looking at.
There's also a, there's also a. Thing going on now that for every ten you buy, you're getting one free. So I had come to you gentlemen previously for ARPA funds for twenty, that will actually be getting twenty two. The five year warranty is not included in that, obviously. It's a hundred thirty dollars. I'm gonna take that out of the operating budget. As I told the chairman today, I'm gonna go back to you guys for a hundred thirty dollars more. From the ARPA when I could just, I have it in operating budget. So our just paying for the, for everything else for those pagers and they're ordered.
Yeah, is that something normally that you do to shop for the price between Northeast and you the Philippines or was there the problem with service?
You shop and when there's a problem with service, you kind of look around and. To be honest. I just wanted to be happy with what's going on. And I felt it was time to change.
We have building issues?
Uh, we were having multiple issues. You know, it's just. Multiple issues about. What we decided to do and then it was done, you know, they were doing things differently. I'm like, oh, that's not what we discussed, so. You know, we've moved on. We're gonna give. Norcom a shot. I know that they're pretty prevalent in this area. I think they do work for. I know talking previously with Jamie Agler, before he got promoted, he was very happy with. So as I said, we're gonna give them an opportunity and see how it works out. We can always switch, switch back. Uh, the stretchers. I don't know if you gentlemen know, Brad called both of us today, I believe. And it said that that's all set now for the ARPA funds for the. Equipment for the ambulances for both. So. You know, that's, those are ordered. On our, on our end, they're ordering. So. You know. Hopefully it'll. Commit in a decent time and then know this tour. Again, are going, going away, going back with them. For, you know, a minimal amount, but. They're giving us something on it, so. I mean, why keep, you know? We have one spare that we're keeping. It's twenty sixteen. So it's relatively new compared to the other two, which were original. Like first generation. Yeah, so that was a great use. We do appreciate the ARPA funds for that. EMS and fire, this EMS desperately needed those stretchers. It's very expensive.
Yeah, they are expensive.
Very expensive, yeah. The camera system, the cameras are ordered for the outside cameras. You're just waiting for those to come in and then they'll schedule. Mounting those, he'll come down and meet with myself and several others and we'll decide where best to mount them outside because. As I told him, I really want. The best amount of coverage we can get. You know, we have a large female population now, that's Brett to tell you and. I wanna make sure that there's cameras outside so they feel safe. You know, be in there late at night or early in the morning. Especially the back parking lot, you can't see it from the street. You know? At least the two sides you can see from the street, but back you can't.
And then that's your security systems complete then?
So then it'll be complete. Nick's working on the, the pops, he had an issue with. The info to, for him to get into. We have the pops. He's just got a code tomorrow and then we're gonna be getting more pops because we're gonna need more.
Okay, so you're still working on the key system?
Yeah, and then once the pods are definitely in place and working, all the keys are gonna get collected and go back to Greg at building maintenance. We're just gonna. I'll keep a small amount, the rest of it, we're going back to Greg. So that, you know. And then it's, then it's about whether or not we wanna eventually replace. Locks with just. Dummies. In most of those doors, so that if somebody has residual key that we don't know about. They can't, I mean, it's gonna alarm anyways. We're gonna know that somebody went in, we're gonna eat when it, when that's broken on the door. But. You know. So we'll have to, we'll have to. Bridge that when it comes. Nick's been a huge help with us with I T. With the computers and everything else. We're still waiting on the, we have the C N network. It's, it's active now at that hole. I don't know, it's inactive, it's only helping, it's active in Sony Hill also. The problem is. That the HVAC system. Is through Comcast. So I'm still paying for it. Cause Nick's trying to work out getting that over to the C N, so we can then get rid of Comcast.
Okay.
Once that happens. I won't be getting those bills that are giving me anxiety that everyone, you know. Hundred and sixty, two hundred dollars, it's crazy. What they charge you for Comcast business, it's just nuts. Trucks are in good shape. I do have one issue with squad five with some rust starting to appear. On the bezels on the front. Small area, like probably like two by two, it's just against the bezels. It's weird. It's on, there's two sets of bezels. And it's on the same two bezels. So when it goes out to normal. Service at G K, I'm gonna ask them to give me a price. To repair that. So in my budget, you're gonna see that it's up a little bit in vehicle maintenance to reflect. What I'll probably need to cover that, but I think that. The age of the truck, we gotta take care of that right now before that spreads to get worse because what's happening is it's pulled up.
Chief, I would suggest you look into your paint and finish warranty on that.
I was gonna ask you about that because.
It's got a twenty year warranty on the.
I was surprised to see, nobody had seen that. I was surprised to see it. I just saw it yesterday.
I don't recall for sure, but I know it's got an extensive warranty that.
It's strange because it's the same two bezels, the same basic place. So I, I'm thinking maybe something in manufacturing one, you know, it just. After maybe it wasn't cleaned enough or something or. I would definitely check out the warranty and find out because if we can get a new warranty, that's even better. Other than that, trucks are in, in, in pretty good shape. Put in some pretty good shape. You know, we got six more firefighters in fire one. Our membership is up over a hundred, we're like a hundred and nine, I believe now. I left the gear the same, we'll see that when we get to that. I left it the same eight cents for now.
Do you ever get your air packs in?
The air packs are supposedly coming in within this year. We've been, we've been all over it. Constantly checking. I mean, nobody's getting, so it's not like it's, it's just us, it's everybody. And that includes New York City. Biggest department in the world, they're not yet. So. It is what it is. You know, it'll be great when we get those twelve, because as I said, we'll shuffle the other ones, put those on the frontline rigs. Shuffle those off the frontline rigs that are on there now to the other rigs. And to training and take the, the oldest twelve out of training and you gentlemen will decide where we need to dispose of that. Whether we put them on the town website or. They go somewhere, you know, they just, they're gonna need to go out of the building because that was. The agreement we made. I wasn't looking for extras, I was just looking to replace.
Very good.
And then the other thing is gear, I don't know. I just wanted to ask if you gentlemen let me know. How we wanna handle expired gear. What are we gonna do with it? Here helmets, I mean, there's a ten year life. Shelf life on everything now, so. I just wanna know what we're supposed to do with it.
So what have you done in the past?
Last time I sent it to.
Uh, stipulation on gears cannot be used for interior structure firefighter. So if you have a fire police person that wants to stay dry and. And warm in the winter, they can have expired gear. So if it has some value versus something other than firefighting.
Do you? Pretty strict town policy on, on the disposal.
So do you have, like, do you guys like a spreadsheet of how you track the gear?
I'm sorry?
Do you have like a spreadsheet of how? So is everything? So we'll know when it's expired.
Everything's assigned, it's, everything, it's all tracked and what's assigned to. Everything in that room that's, it's there right now is all tagged as to what size it is, the age of it. The whole deal. So. And that goes for everything. You know, like I said, it's helmets, boots.
So does the town.
Harnesses.
And I, I don't know.
What the exact policy is, but it's something, it's just something to the fact that, you know, the, the person that's wants to get rid of the excess equipment. Has to write a letter to the board of selectmen stating what the, you know, the approximate value of it is.
We'll, we'll look into it and let you know, so it's. We'll, we will address that.
Yeah, I mean, I forget the exact policy. I know I ran until before when I tried to get rid of some gear.
So we, the only other thing is we had a, a major shuffle in, in officers this year. And we'll get you a, a current list. So you know who did what. You know, there were big changes, I guess, so we don't do it, shuffle with officers, so. Okay, changes for both of us this year.
Good or bad?
Uh, process good. I would assume for Sony.
Well, that's it.
No, thank you very much. Yes. Alright, Chief Baker.
Okay, good evening, um, Chief McCollum covered a lot of things that I was gonna discuss, um, so the radio project is complete. All of the chargers are installed, all of the officers and members were. Trained on how to use them. The. Radios are, are working well, the. Advantage of them, a lot of the features that we talked to when we were trying to push this. Purchased through such as being a dual band radios, we can talk for mutually partner, the safety of the. Many button on the mic and all the controls are, so it's, it's a great. Added feature and, and safety. The. Old radios that like we've discussed is not going to be a. A sellout asset, we're keeping them in-house for use for EMS members. Or fire police members, so all of those are just gonna be able to be. Uh, utilized. We do have a couple of radios that were. Mutually portables that we kept on the. Truck, just one for each truck in case they were to go out. I have some interest of people may want them, but the. Thing is, when I talk to Utility Norcom, it is kind of a phased out model that they're not really using anymore and the value of one of those radios is thirty five dollars. You know, we spent like twelve hundred dollars a piece when we first got them, now it's down to thirty five bucks. So it's really. Not worth, but um, some of the, like for the damn ring on tears, if they get called for usually tankered or something, they get at least talked to. So that was what I, who I reached out to. Like Chief McCollum said, the C N network is up in our building as well. Same issue where it's not communicating with the H V A C system, so we do have to keep Comcast, so that's why I still end my operating budget. The, we're on track on the budget. The. We had a couple of unforeseen repairs that we needed to do on the trucks. The driver's seat on engine one had a ratchet issue where you could be driving in the seat would just fall back. So and that whole ratcheting system with having an airbag in the seat was a thousand dollars. We had a. A five inch gate that needed new seals, that was nine hundred dollars. You know, so that's why, you know, the padding in the budget for repairs and needed those trucks are getting older and older, so. That's one of the things we did start discussing capital and getting these trucks repaired, replaced. Uh, talking about trucks, engine eleven, I'm still wondering what we're doing as far as putting it back on some sort of a. Broker or an auction fight, we've got nowhere with the twenty five thousand dollar reserve. The truck has been stripped, so it would be. Not cost effective at all to put it back in service if we wanted to keep it at this point. It's literally been stripped of all electronics, all equipment. And now it's even worse with having the tires to be, were needed to be replaced, B O D inspection, ladder inspection, oil inspection. Pump inspection. So it's not.
If, if I can, that, that question came up at the board of selectmen meeting and we were going to invite both chiefs in to talk about it. But since then I had talked to you about it, so I'm aware of the situation. Uh, the other selectmen was wondering if we'd just keep it in reserve, but. It doesn't seem applicable, so. We, we got up to twenty five hundred dollars. I can't believe. Someone just walked for twenty five dollars.
Yeah, but it's still.
Right, it's so. The unfortunate thing is, is that people don't know. That it was professionally maintained, it was garaged, it was. You know, treated with a lot of care, one trophy is actually that break, so it was well, well cared for.
If, if you can give me, I talked to someone who lives on an island. And he said, give me the specs and, you know, he go to the local fire department on the island, see if they would be interested in. So if you can give me information.
Books and manuals and specs on it. We have one member that is taking. Fire one, we're doing continuing education. I have one member that's taking fire officer one, I have one member that's taking. Fire service instructor. We have three that passed last year, the fire one, and we have those three now going through a E M T class. Uh, we have four that just finished in E M T class. So, you know, training is still a, a high priority. At this point, I think we're good on gear, just like Chief McCollum said, we should be okay with the aid sets, but as we get into the budget, you're gonna find. A lot of prices are just increases and that's what is the cause of. Budgets, so, and we did reach out to most of the vendors to find out what kind of surprises we're gonna see in. In increases in cost for products and services.
March, we're all saying March, would say March too, maybe March to me, yeah. Place you're now to raise the prices. Marching like May or June. Before, before the new budget season.
Um, as far as the security camera system, I've been talking to. Uh, Nick with I T, he is probably going to have to go back to Brad because we did. Talked to him last year for quite a time and his initial cost may have gone up because the project hasn't started yet, so. He was gonna work with Brad on that. He was also going to work with Brad on upgrading our phone system to be just like the rest of the town and move it over to. Uh, I P phone system instead of regular landline. And. Get the same phones that they have in his building. He was also working on possibly getting us a new. Uh, overhead projector. Those ours is not working properly, he said the school system is getting new ones, so we're trying to again repurpose some items. And. He's gonna upgrade the wireless routers to work off of the fiber optics hopefully, so we're kind of on. Stuck on two systems for, for the time being indefinitely, so we can get this either H V A C system and the. The Wi-Fi system things.
Thank you, Chief.
You know, I neglected to let you know that for the first time ever, we've appointed a safety officer. And a chief save. Sony Hills had a safety officer for a long, long. So the chief's able to assist the chiefs both with administrative. And duties out in the field. Safety officer, everybody knows what the safety officer is supposed to be doing, so.
Absolutely. Nice work. Alright, uh, the next item that we have on here was a discussion and review of objectives for the year. I think though we'll, we'll pass that and just. Discuss that after we, you know, review the operating budget, I think it's better to get an overview and then start from there. So we'll skip to the discussion of the. Operating budgets and we'll start with Chief McColl.
Alright, so as you see my narrative on the top page. The increase, the proposed increase is ten thousand ninety four dollars and seventy nine cents. Just right in line with what was done last year. You know, and I've explained why, you know, vendors, you know, like I said, unfortunately. They have, have not been able to continue to hold the line on pricing. So. You know, we're seeing increased costs everywhere as Chief Baker talked about. So I worked pretty hard, sharpened my pencil to try and keep it. Within reason. You'll see on the second page. The current amount, the proposed amount and the difference. Okay, there's, there's two that are. That stayed the same. And then there's. Three that went up. And as we go through it, I can explain to you where they went. Okay, so. The equipment is supplies, account two oh two, one of six hundred and eighty two dollars. So. I moved around a lot of stuff from, from last year to this year. It's kind of timely that I put in replacement and repairs to appliances as needed as Chief Baker just talked about spending nine hundred dollars on an appliance. So. That's why that's in there because. You know, if you have something fail, I, I gotta have some money somewhere to repair it. Hopefully repair it and not have to replace it. Because if you have to replace an appliance like that, you're talking probably a couple thousand dollars. Vehicle maintenance, again. Is up due to. Costs overall and like I said, I put a little bit extra in there just if we have to do anybody work. It's not covered under the. You know, the warranty. The fire office maintenance, I left the same, we're, we're doing pretty well with that. Using education, again, we're doing pretty well with that. And then professional services went up three thousand one dollar thirty two cents. And that is mostly driven by physicals and motion physicals and testing, required test. So like I said, as we work through it, you'll be able to see that on here. Two oh two. They have replacement or repairs to appliances as needed. Repairs and testing of thermal cameras is needed, again, same thing, they're expensive units. We've got two last year, thank you very much. But we still have some that are older. And I'm just worried that if something happens to one of them. I'm not having the money there to. Get it looked at and get a repair. Like I said, hopefully you get a repair, you don't buy a new. Sensors, replacement of various sensors and gas test canisters for meters is needed, the sensors for the four gas meters. I've just had to buy three. So I bought four because there's a shelf life on it. So we have one spare, we have seven of those four gas meters. Each sensor is approximately four hundred dollars. And we're doing the work in-house. If we sent it out, it'd be the sensor. Plus the labor for them to take the screws out and open up the case and take that sensor out, the new sensor in. And then test it. We're doing that in-house, so it's just the sensors, so that's what this is for. Various replacement of equipment, your alterations of offsite cleaning is necessary throughout the year. The offsite cleaning. Is basically if you have a fire where. The machine here won't do it, or you don't wanna throw it in this machine here because of. The material you know is on it, we bag those and send them right out. If they fail. They don't come back. That's the law. If they fail, they keep them and they notify us and we, we're stuck, we gotta replace it. So. That's, that's something else to, to think about in the future. The A B three thousand high temp masks. I learned that Stony Hill does have those already, right? I know you gentlemen have talked about doing things together with that. Well, you don't have any. We have like two. So I put in for twenty, which will get me most of the interior crew that's. That's around pretty much all the time. With one of those masks. And then from there I should be able to. Go down. Budget by budget and get. Get them all replaced.
Do you know how many masks by chance you have total or not?
I can get you. You know.
Sure you're talking about.
Personal mask because here we are again with another variant of COVID. I would rather they have their personal mask like you and I did years ago, Fred, in our own bag that you're responsible for, you're cleaning. And you're the only one wearing. Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I would, I just wanna make sure that we have some sort of tracking system on them.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that was a problem in the past.
The replacement of various sized blades, change for saws as needed is fifteen hundred. Stationware uniforms, t-shirts and caps went up. We were kind of shell shocked when we went to look at t-shirts and what it would cost to do them. And then we decided to that we, we would like to do some golf shirts like Stony Hill does, so I upped this line item. And, and brought down other stuff. Firefighter gear. So that's the helmet, helmet, hood, boots, gloves, harness, which is get into our harness. That's two hundred ninety five dollars alone, just the harness. Okay, suspenders, coat and pants. It's forty four hundred ninety seven dollars per set. Eight sets, this is what we got last year, thirty five thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars. Okay, that's morning pride. We just ordered six sets from the eight sets you approved in the, in the budget that I'm working on. Uh, they will be in in two months. Those sets, which I was surprised that it's that gonna be that quick of a turnaround. Uh, replacement of rope and equipment on squad five and truck one, including rope harnesses and all the hardware that I talked about that last year. Get the rescue truck done. And then do the squad and the truck because those are the other two units that have the rope on it. And then from there we'll be able to. Have a program of replacement. Because that unfortunately wasn't being done. Uh, replacement of fire hose, various sizes. Six thousand, one millimeter two inch, I, I just went up to eight thousand to, we have some, some three inch, we need to get some two and a half. I'd love to get. A thousand feet of five inch, but. Not. Not at the price it is right now, there's no way. It's a thousand dollars a length. So. You know, we can, we can tough it out for now. Um, that's all fabric, it's a little bit lighter. Um, it's worked out well for us. So the total for account two oh two. You know, the handles was fifteen hundred is sixty nine thousand eight hundred fifty one dollars. So account two oh seven, firehouse maintenance, staying the same. It's the annual kitchen hood cleaning. Kitchen cleaning, the floor cleaning, relaxing of the tile surfaces. Building repair and cleaning and the pest control. And that totals out at eighteen thousand three hundred, and that's exactly what I have now.
So.
What type of repairs is in?
Any, any repairs like that, the building maintenance doesn't, that's not a major thing, we take care of. You know, it's typically simple stuff.
So what is basically what your cleaning costs, I mean, I can.
I have to check with Kathy because she has the, she has the paperwork on it, I don't have that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Um account two oh eight, vehicle maintenance. The fine mobile annual cleaning and service went up a little bit. And then we have mandatory vehicle compliance inspections and testing of apparatus and pumps. And you know that boost truck, one rescue, one tanker, one squad five, engine six utility one. And the three vehicles used by myself and the other officers. And the other two vehicles that are there are also used um for training. Um they've been going to school in up in uh. Is it Morris? And they're using one of the the town vehicles, we don't want them traveling in a personal vehicle. Something happens, it's better that they're in a town vehicle.
Was there what, the Blazer and the Expedition?
Blazer and Expedition, that's correct. Okay, and it's, so for the inspections, the mandatory stuff is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four. The sub, the surface, service stayed the same. Uh truck one tanker, one, the three-year break check. Uh various repairs throughout the year, tires and rims, that's the twelve thousand, that stayed the same, we've used some of that already. Um annual testing of hose nozzles, brown ladders and the aerial ladder went up. Yeah, you'll see seven thousand twenty-three forty-seven, that's an exact quote. And I have that with me tonight if you wanna see it, um they're very good at what they do. But they've gone up and there's there's a fuel surcharge there too for them to come here to do it. So that's part of, part of what drove the price up.
Same company do all, all of that?
I'm sorry, same company, yes, they do, I I brought the paperwork so you could see that um tonight. Uh annual SCV flow testing and service went up slightly. Again, same thing, you're you're driven by industry and 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 the fuel cost for them to get here and everything else. They come and they set up right in one of our bays and they do all the airbags. And they're telling us right there in real time what's going on and what's wrong and they pretty much are able to repair anything that's. Wrong right there, that day, and we're able to put them right back in service. Uh annual first equipment testing and service went up slightly. You know, the the line tools are getting older. It's, you know. It's where we're at. Uh annual service and expect inspection of all extinguishers, I left that alone. That's working out pretty well, I just actually got four new twenty pounders today. Uh new use, because brand new, very expensive. Used that passed the test and he's got them all the time, that's what I buy, I don't buy brand new. There's no, they're the same thing. And you're saving a lot of money. Uh the air compressor service testing and the air sampling, forty-three hundred. That's the where they come in, the four times a year and they sample also. Okay, that's that's it, that should actually take four times, not sometimes, they sample every time they commit. They're also doing the compressor on the rescue truck. There are the, they're doing that and we have a sheet on there that passed with flying colors.
They say on that quarterly as well, or?
He'll do that when he comes in and that's included in the price, that's correct. And then there's a, it's it's this size, he they send email to me and I'm able to print the sheets out.
Okay.
There's one that's that's supposed to read by the compressor in the building.
Yeah.
Because you're supposed to post it.
Yep.
So they're, they can see it, and there's one that they're gonna put in a frame on the rescue truck, I told them it has to be in that compartment. So if somebody wants to see it, it's right there.
Okay.
Yeah. So the total on that account is is sixty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-seven forty-seven. Okay, so. That went up six thousand two hundred seven forty-seven, okay? My three oh one dues and education stayed exactly the same. Wow, it's written exactly the same it was in last year's budget, it's worked out well for us so far. Um we've done a lot of training now, we we have a, an officer currently in uh. Fire instructor two, because now they they require you to have. Fire instructor two when you're doing a live front. And they would prefer to. These places prefer you to have two that are certified in that, so. One of the, one of the officers said we go take it, so. He's in it and, you know, that's good, so we'll have two in the building. Assistant chief and my little tenants will both be certified. On the court, this has worked out well throughout the year, we go to different fire schools, we go to. The Fairfield, we go to New Haven, we go to uh Emery. Um eventually, we're gonna try to get in with New Milker because they're building a brand new building up there and it's gonna be closer than Fairfield and New Haven. So we'll see, but uh the total there is twenty-four thousand, the second due change, there was a zero in this thing. Professional services. Now, what I did here is I I wrote the fee there, there's a column, so you can see if it's monthly or annual, okay? So Comcast, again, just like Chief Baker said, it's still there because we still have Comcast. Once we don't have Comcast, it'll be great to get rid of that and. Is there a timeframe, I don't being able to, we give a system, Nick is working on it, I can ask him tomorrow. He's been trying to work that out so that that can go over for both departments and we can get rid of it. Wells Fargo Financial, that's the uh, that's the copier. It's kind of weird that it's that, that's what that is, that's for the copier.
I've been asking that.
We just replaced. We just, well, I. So I'm explaining to you that it's the copier, but we just got a brand new one. From from base uh two months ago. Same price, because that one was failing and they've been in multiple times and they said, look. Maybe your brand new one, we'll come in and do it. And it's the same price, I said, that's a no brainer, that's fine, give me the paperwork and I'll sign. And I checked with upstairs about it too and he said, yep, that's you guys signed for that, but we, you know, we're paying for it. So they took the old one and run it a brand new one and set it all up and it's working fine.
And then it costs us sixteen hundred bucks.
No more per year, per year. Well, yeah, but that's that's sixteen hundred dollars per year, it's it's a monthly fee.
Oh.
That's what I'm telling you.
All right.
I put down a column for fee, so you know it's monthly.
So so you're saying all the numbers in the right hand column are are the total annual.
Actually, the total, and then what you do is you're looking here, like. The second page, those are all annual fees, which is yearly, so when the bill comes for behavioral healing, I pay it. A whole amount, okay, emergency reporting, same thing, I pay the whole amount, nineteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I I, now that you explain it. It says monthly and then the next one down is annually, so you wouldn't take it.
So.
Okay.
So computers and technology services.
Four bucks, yeah, yeah.
Is annual, because that's any annual thing that's there for what we need it for. You know, Nick needs, he's a little dope for something he's doing for us.
The behavioral healing, that's like EAP.
That's EAP, that's correct, yes. And then the last thing is the ocean supply and physicals and testing. Um and that, you know, I I pushed that up because our, like I said, our membership now is up to, you know, like hundred ninety.
Hey Chief, I mean, I need you to do thing, make a recommendation to you. Have those people come into your department on the grill night and just explain. I'm sure a lot of your members aren't even aware of it or, you know, what that that service provides. I I know I've done that in the past, you know, you contact them and they'll come in and they'll do a whole presentation on the other services they provide. You know, some members are actually aware of, you know.
Well, that's a good idea, we can do a joint one, both departments, we're trying to do a lot more stuff together. So that would be a good.
You use the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a townwide, the PD.
Okay.
The town itself, the fire departments, we all use it. It's a, it's a one-shot stopper. And it's all confidential, you can you can call them and talk to them and there's nothing, nothing goes anywhere else. If you talk to me, you need to talk to them, they help you. So, as I said. It's ten thousand ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Is the total, so.
That's from the actual operating budget last year, well, we ended up.
The actual operating budget last year is right here on this sheet, I can see, one ninety-two, two sixty-five, which is what I'm working on now. Okay, the opposed is two oh two, three fifty-nine seventy-nine, okay? The difference is plus ten thousand ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, okay? So I I purposely did this out this way so that you see current, the proposed for for this fiscal, we're coming up. And the difference, whether it was a zero or 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 a dish.
Gotcha.
Are there any questions, Jim?
No, it looks good, Chris.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If there, if there needs to be cuts, I told the chairman and he agreed it.
Uh.
If you guys.
Don't start now, don't start.
Please give us some, please give us a money figure so that we pay and I.
The very modest.
We can absorb it.
I look at it as a very modest increase, Chris.
I think that uh ten thousand is an acceptable increase, I think, yeah. Just going to the grocery store, we've all learned that the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Price is.
Close ten thousand more to go to the boat.
Just gonna say, I mean.
The increase latter was right around ten thousand.
Yeah.
That we came up from waiting two to one ninety-two.
Yep, yep, so. Okay, all right, I appreciate the hard work.
I took a lot of stuff out, let me tell you, it was higher.
Did you save this, save this that?
Tried, we're all taxpayers.
All right, thank you.
You wanna?
You gotta vote on it now or?
So that that, you know, messed up our form. So there's only no one?
Yeah.
No. Do those others?
No, not all of them. John, how many, you have any extra copies or not of your?
Um, yeah.
If you could give one to Fred and, you guys.
It's pretty, pretty rich.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I would give you one, right?
Uh no, I mean, you gave me one, I made a copy.
Only got one side.
Was there one side?
So we, we don't today.
Uh he was excited to learn of the cap, but Chief. You you wanna cap it?
I haven't looked at one.
Yeah, you got, I'll tell you what, when I'm done, I'll give you mine. All right, Adam. All right, Chief.
Okay, so um. We'll start with the uh two oh two um equipment count that went up about six point seven percent. Um most of it was just uh vendor cost increase. Um equipment went up a couple hundred dollars again for uh equipment. We need some uh new pagers, some of the motor rollers are failing and they're getting to be obsolete, we're getting away from Motorola and going with the communication pagers. Um.
What are you going with?
Education.
As to the brand or is it?
It's another, yeah, it's a brand.
Oh, it's the same one that you showed us that last night?
It's those.
Oh. Listen to you when you're at work.
I know, it's way too technical.
Need to uh add another laptop, the uh upgrade that we did last year, we did not do every officer and so there is some more uh needed uh computer equipment. Uh. Uniforms station where we didn't have a lot of increase in uh memberships, so that I was able to keep the same. Um increasing cost for gloves, helmets and boots that uh went up, uh turn up here, went up significantly. Uh foam actually dropped because we made that purchase last year, we didn't use any foam, I don't foresee needing to uh purchase foam. Uh hose, we really didn't have any failures, so I left foam uh hose alone. We do need to uh buy uh speedy drying absorbent pads, so I increased that one. And the hazmat meters, we got the five gas meter, so that's just gonna be for um. The uh carbon monoxide meter, so we still need money in that budget, but not the the full amount for that five gas that we got.
Okay.
Um. Supplies for SEPA, when the cost went up. The battery pagers cost went up, uh drilling emergency food went up significantly, we were talking about uh the grocery store and. Um we're spending over a hundred dollars, you know, just every week on pizza just to feed people on drill night, so you take that times the uh, you know, fifty-two weeks of the year. It's a lot of money. Um. Pre-mixed fuel that I didn't uh increase the cost and the adapters and fittings, we we left that alone. Um repairs, that's where some costs went up, so it went up on the uh radios and um mobile repairs. Gas meter repairs are going up, sauce, we didn't have any issues with, so I left that alone. The um SEBA repairs and testing that went up uh significantly and also um the cost of repairs on PBE. So that's um justifying the uh cost increases in that uh line item, uh firehouse maintenance. The um. The big uh increase there is on outside landscaping, we spent a lot of money on reading, mulching, uh pruning. Around seasons, the uh SEBA compressor by Chief McCollum talked about that, price went up for the uh quarterly air testing. Uh garage door maintenance I increased, we had quite a bit of problems with the uh. Overhead door, at least for the English, which is going on six or seven times a day, it's down and down, up and down, up and down, and that one we had to kind of go off quite a, quite a bit. Um and then again, cost increases on um the extinguisher services. Um and also the copier, um same as Chief McCollum had, and we have the the same uh lease. Uh vehicle maintenance went up uh six point eight percent. Uh again, for price increases. The uh big significant one is the uh federal inspection, I increased the um. Annual uh repair uh. Required NFA pump test and service test went up. The um. Miscellaneous parts and fluids and cleaning supplies, the price of oil has gone up, so we increased that a little bit. Um the cost for surfboard to come in went up and the trucks and batteries, tires and battery all at the same. Uh dues and education, um just the cost on training materials, I added a couple hundred dollars there and. Um the cost of training classes is going up, so I uh up that uh uh slightly. And the professional services, I just increased the uh physicals just because of physicals and people as well. The few items that I put into the capital expense can be taken out if we decide that those need to go into uh ARPA request. So the total budget increase was only a seven point three increase.
So you haven't bought those on our reports, like the sheet showed, right?
Right, yeah, so that's what we decided to take those out, I put them in both places, so either way, I wanna try and have a uh a running total.
Okay.
Of what we spend on those um. Line items that have been issued to us.
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate you, if that's uh the chimney kicks and vials for two thousand dollars.
Chris Williams is.
Same.
Who was that?
Yellow chimney kits, the ones that you guys.
Ah.
I forget the name, they come in a yellow.
All right.
So they, they, they've already had.
They're pretty fantastic kits, it's all complete. We have two, uh um I'm gonna look the, if I have money left at the end of the year, I'm gonna get a third and put it on the truck.
I forget the 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 name of it, but it's.
Yeah, any, any of those.
It's better than the old school.
I always need a pre-made chimney kit, that's why I was a little.
It's actually, yeah.
Find it? Yeah, it's a great kit, and the thing is, you're only taking a, within the kit, there's a sleeve.
Yeah.
It has stuff in it and that's all you take to the roof, you don't take that whole kit to the roof. The kit goes actually inside the the structure.
Yep.
With the crew downstairs, with the scrubbers on and everything, and you're going up on the roof. And you're sending that that torpedo down.
Yep.
And then they're connecting it down there and then you're pulling it back up to scrub the chimney. And then there's, there's different brushes in there too, different sizes, so you can change them.
Get into a cleaning service.
It's really, it's a real. It's, it's only like, literally, it's like this square and it's only like this high, there.
It's a lot of.
This is a reusable thing?
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and it's, and it's in a soft kit, Rich, so. You can fit it in the truck, it's not like a a solid box, it's a soft kit, so it'll squish a little bit, you can push it in, fit it.
Yeah.
You wanna make it, it's well worth it.
All of these items here?
Yeah, the the kit and the command board.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll make a recommendation, uh we put the, the uh items listed at the bottom here, the four oh three capital equipment, the two chimney. Kits and the incident command board, boards uh into the ARPA box.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, should the probably say aye.
I I like this. So that that'll reduce the whole the whole budget, but which is about it.
Yeah.
I got someone.
On your person. No, I'm saying on your race, on your increases.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's fine. But I got some, I got some ARPA left too. I'm gonna. Now that the stretchers are a done deal, now we know what's left for the E M S R.
All right, okay, so uh. We have to we have to make a motion to accept these or?
Yeah, yeah, make a motion to.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept both budgets as presented by the chief uh as read.
And and more. And modify the.
Oh, yeah, with with the modification of the.
Tony Hill.
Sony Hills uh final item.
Why don't why don't we give a number of motion? Take the twelve thousand dollars at eighty-nine.
It's right there. One hundred. One seventy-seven. Okay.
So then what include the, you know, in your motion, Chris, Tony Hill uh for a total budget of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars?
Yeah. All right. You see where that is? Uh I gotta give her this. Oh, okay.
She's not making a motion. It's not P D J B.
No, no, I got one. We're good.
All right.
He gave.
These two items to me are the funds.
I have other lighters here, so if anybody wants more.
All right. So I make a motion that we accept uh both budgets. Uh as presented with vessels being uh one hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred sixty-five thousand.
The current.
All right, so you're. Two hundred and two thousand. Three hundred fifty-nine thousand seventy-nine cents. And Stoney Hills at one hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars. Second. Seconded by Rich, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We will present the budgets as presented thus. Thanks for it, guys. I appreciate your hard work there.
Thank you. Okay, uh. I was told by a little bird it was gonna be a take year, so. I don't know, because Brad had mentioned the both chiefs, but we were looking at. Sort of a five-year capital plan, maybe a ten-year capital plan. I talked to Brad about that yesterday, actually, uh Rich, and I I. I have the five-year form.
Right.
Bring up room tomorrow.
Right, yeah, he had mentioned that.
I know he didn't have it.
Yeah, so uh we'd like to. Keep it going for the ten years, so.
I think we can both do that. It's just very tough to to project out.
I I know, but at least something on on paper that we can have and.
And that's right.
Back.
Be wary.
As as where like we.
The members of the board plan that like future years. Oh, why is that up? No, it's been on for. Right.
Yeah.
But those the 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 second five years, it's gonna be like a.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but and.
Rich is something.
Rich and I spoke to Brad. We'll we'll focus on the the five years, but we'll have the ten years.
Right, right. That's what Brad was saying. It makes it. He said it makes it easier for them to project on as a.
Make a motion that we adjourn second. Next my rich.
Next meeting is.
February three, aye, aye.
You have now.
We might, we might have to have a special meeting. Of course, I shouldn't be talking. Whoa, yeah. Uh do we have to meet before the?
We may have to meet for the for the capital, to present the capital. That might be a special meeting next month.
Okay, if we do that, I'll do that. If I have to look and see when our uh. February meeting is.
Well, let's see, it's uh April.
No, it's quarterly.
No, we.
We said, well, we did go monthly.
Yeah. Yes, we did.
Didn't we say that as the second of every?
I think it's the second one there every month. It hasn't changed. It's my five year. I have a copy for Brad. I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
So you guys have a mission on the uh study?
No, I gotta, I'll I'll have it after the for the February meeting.
I know you guys wanted to see this.
I have. Then I gotta.
I gotta get that back, but I wanted to show you. Fred may be aware of. They'll say, but you gentlemen probably aren't. So the second Wednesday we should be.
The eighth, all right, so the next thing will be February eighth, is that? Is that what it is?
And then the ninth is is the uh.